Here with us today, sir. If you would, please lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Cam, if you would do the pledges.
Gladly. Heavenly Father, we acknowledge that you are a holy God. And it's only on the basis of the mercy and grace and salvation that comes through Christ that we as sinful people can come in your presence. God, today we come boldly to your throne in these times of need, and we are a needy people. By asking you to intervene on behalf of our nation, if peace and righteousness might come. Father, we pray today for our judges and for our commissioners. We pray for their health. We pray for their families. God, we pray specifically today for Scotty, the God that you might add healing and favor and blessing to the medicine and medical procedures that are taking care of him. Father, we pray today for our law enforcement personnel. God, we pray that you'd be their forward and rear guard, and you might protect them. You'd bring to nothing the plans of the evil. God, today we pray for this court and its work. We pray, God, that the righteousness and justice that you've raised these men up to offer would become forth from this place. God, again, we're grateful for the blessings that are ours, and we ask again, Lord, that we might be mindful of who you are in our lives and honor and glorify you in all we do. Today then, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Dr. Romans, thank you, sir. Very much. All right. It is 9:02. We will call this meeting to order. Ms. Iwaski, do we have any citizens' comments?
No, sir.
None at this time. So item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners Court on October the 13th, 2020. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments?
Hearing none, Judge, I move that we accept the regular session of Commissioners Court October the 13th, 2020, as presented.
Second.
Motion made, excuse me, by Commissioner Tule, second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the minutes of October 13th, 2020, as presented. All those in favor? Commissioner, are you abstaining? No, you're muted, sir.
Yeah.
All right. Item passes forward, one abstention. Item number two, consider and take action to proclaim October the 24th, 2020, as World Polio Day. And gentlemen, we have Ms. Christie Turner here with us with a whole host of folks. And I must, our librarian, Ms. Michelle Zanor, help bring this before us here. If you would like to speak first, Ms. Zanor, since you sponsored them coming.
Thank you for having us here. Rotary has done an excellent job eradicating polio throughout the world, and we're just here to celebrate that.
All right. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody up there. Like Michelle said, thank you for letting us come today. October 24th is Saturday, and it is World Polio Day. Whereas Rotary is a global network of neighbors, friends, and leaders, and problem solvers who unite and take action in createry service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas, members of the Rotary Club of Athens, Texas, have been devoted to fulfilling the mission of Rotary in Henderson County and Athens, Texas, since 1927. Whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus, and in 1988 helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Incentive, which today includes the World Health Organization, the U.S. Center of Disease Control, the UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, the GAVI Vaccine Alliance, to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas, polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating this disease. And whereas, to date, Rotary has contributed more than $2.1 billion and countless volunteer hours to protecting more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries. And therefore, be it resolved that Henderson County Judge Wade McKinney, along with the Henderson County Commissioners, endorse the Rotary Club of Athens, Texas, in its efforts to eradicate polio, and do hereby proclaim Saturday, October 24th, 2020, World Polio Day in Henderson County, Texas, and encourage all citizens to join the members of Rotary International in the fight for polio-free world.
Gentlemen, any questions or comments? Ms. Turner, who do you have with you today?
So we have Doug Hurst. He is our Membership Boardman Chair. Donna Meredith, she is our Public Image Chair. Then we've got Charlie Tidmore, our Event Chair. And then Michelle Zanor, she is our Secretary.
Great. Well, we know, everyone that knows Rotary knows of the great works that it does throughout the world and through our community locally. We appreciate the efforts, the time. These are unpaid time that is used to better our community and better the world in general. And we really appreciate what y'all do in this time of our pandemic that we have today. These other very important issues are not thought of as often, but it is still a great effort, and we really appreciate y'all taking the time and effort to come before us today. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Also, on August 25th, Africa proclaimed free of polio. So that was a huge milestone, and I believe there's like 74 cases in Pakistan and 55 in Afghanistan, and that's it right now. So we're working on closing those numbers.
Wow. Gentlemen, anything? Were hearing none, think?
Oh, I just thank y'all for being part of Rotary and doing this here, and I hope sometime in the soon future that y'all can come back and say that we've eradicated COVID-19.
We'll work on that. That's next. So I don't know. I need you guys.
Yeah, we got it. All right. Commissioner Thomas, any comments, sir? You're muted, sir. You're muted again. See if I can find it here.
Sorry, Judge.
There you are. Now, any comments, sir?
No, I was just trying to thank all the volunteers, everybody that supports the World Polio Day. Pretty awesome.
It really is. All right. Well, gentlemen, entertain a motion.
Yeah, now I can make that motion that we proclaim October the 24th, 2020, as World Polio Day.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner McCam, to proclaim October 24th, 2020, as World Polio Day. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you very much.
We really appreciate your efforts in Rotary for all it does. Once we get the, Ms. Turner, once we get Commissioner Thomas to sign, we'll get y'all a copy of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it all.
All right. Item number three, consider and take action on Eustace ISD tax resale deeds in Hidden Hills Harbor lots 221, lots 222, lot 232, and Cherokee Shores Lot 163, Lot 171, located in Precinct 2. Commissioner Tule.
Yes, sir, Judge. The Eustace Independent School District has been doing a good job over the last five years to get these vacant lots back on the tax road. And here today, Wade Jent with Lombarder and Associates is here to tell us about these three lots, four lots, five lots.
Five lots.
Five lots.
So all of these have previously been approved by the school district, so we're just basically seeking consent from the commissioners to go ahead and resell these. These are properties that have already gone through the sheriff's sale without a bid, have been struck off to the entities, and now are being offered for resale. This is similar to what we've done many times in the past. The first two, this is the Otis Hoyt Lots, two different bids on the two lots. Both buyers have previously bought properties and have successfully resold them and made them productive property back onto the tax rolls. So we would recommend the approval of those two. The next one, the Eddie Chestnut Lot, this is a bid by someone who has a family member across the street, so they wish to reinstitute the lot as productive property, hopefully build a house on it. The last two are bids by Mr. Turner, who has successfully bid and repurposed many lots in Eustace ISD in the past. All of these are within the parameters that the Eustace ISD has set for in terms of reselling the lots that have been struck off. So if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer, but we would request the court approve these, and I've got, we've submitted deeds to Angie. We had some, there was a typo in two of them. We've resubmitted. I think everybody has what they need, though.
Okay. Gentlemen, questions?
Yeah, Mr. Jent, can you tell us, just for the record, I saw where some of them are about nine years old that hadn't been on the tax road?
Yeah, so a couple of these lots were, as the court's aware, historically, the Eustace ISD has had kind of a fairly high threshold in terms of how much they want to recover for the lots that have been struck off to the entities. They have recently, in the last year or two, agreed to reduce that minimum bid. So a couple of these have been on the struck-off list for many years, and these are now, because of the reduction in required minimum bids, are now coming to where they're getting actual people interested in paying the amounts. And so, again, this is consistent with the new pattern by the school district of trying to get these properties back on the tax roll and just realizing that the amount of the taxes that are due are going to exceed the value of the property. So if we ever want anybody to reinvest in the community and put these properties back on the tax roll, we're going to have to accept something less than what the original taxes were struck off. And that's at least two or three of these lots fall within that category.
Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Judge, I move that we accept the Eustace ISD tax resale deeds in Hidden Hills Harbor for Lot 221, 222, and Lot 232, and also in Cherokee Shores subdivision Lot 163 and 171, located in Precinct 2.
I'll second the motion, Judge.
Motion made by Commissioner Tule, second by Commissioner, excuse, excuse me, Commissioner Thomas, to approve the resale lots as presented for Hidden Hills Harbor and Cherokee Shores. All those in favor? Item passes. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Jent.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item four, consider and take action on special road use indemnity agreement and permit for County Road 4530, located in Precinct 4. Commissioner?
This IPL partners, they are wanting to use County Road 4530 for access road to their project location for their headquarters. It's about 1,200 foot, the road use they're going to be using, and they have applied for an application, and all their papers are signed, and they have also had their bond in place for any damages that may occur to this road.
Questions for the commissioner?
They're going to be bringing all their equipment in on their road to their office.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, would you like to speak on that, Charles?
Yeah, please come forward and introduce yourself.
Hi. Good morning. My name is Charles Cameron. I'll be the construction manager for this IPL project. And actually, what we're saying here from Southland, IPL Partners, the contractor, the kind of area in question, that's going to be, not all the equipment's going to come through there. They're going to have some minimal material deliveries there, but we are going to have the construction trailers there, so just the main kind of offices will be there. Is that correct, is he?
You're going to bring, like, a dozer, you're going to bring some type of actual excavation stuff, and you're going to be working in the road most of the time, so they're trying to reduce the traffic.
The rest of the actual job sites, there's 10 individual job sites across Techstock Roads and throughout Precinct 2 and 4, I believe, and so that's where the actual main construction traffic will be. They'll be coming off directly off Techstock Roads. This is the only county road, and it's, the TRWD own that property on that corner there of FM 2588 and 4530, County Road 4530. So that's where they're going to use, a lay-down yard, but most of the actual, the vast majority of the actual construction work and construction equipment, traffic will be on those Techstock Roads at each individual tunnel location.
And this road is a main use road for the Athens tree farms. There's already a lot of truck traffic that travels in, and it's held up real well, so they travel it a lot.
Okay.
With loads of trees.
All right. Questions? Mr. County Attorney, you've had opportunity to review and good to go, or standard.
What are we talking about?
The road use agreement for County Road 4530.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any further comments? Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, sir. Right, thank you, Judge.
All right. Well, since there are none, entertain a motion with the judge and commissioner's authorization to sign.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion to accept the road, special road indemnity agreement and permit for County Road 4530, located in Precinct 4, with a judge and commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the special road use indemnity agreement and permit for County Road 4530, located in Precinct 4, with Commissioner Richardson and County Judge's authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the special road use indemnity agreement and permit for County Road 4530, located in Precinct 4, with Commissioner Richardson and County Judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. Thank you. Item five is a public hearing at, it's supposed to be at 9:15, and it's on setting a speed limit of 35 miles an hour on County Road 4226, located in Precinct 4. Ladies and gentlemen, this is an opportunity for anyone that wishes to speak for or against the setting of a speed limit, and the time is 9:19. If we can get a motion to move into public hearing.
Judge, I'd like, second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tule, second by Commissioner Richardson, to move into public hearing. All those in favor? Item passes. We are now in public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the item? Make another call. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the setting of a 35 mile an hour speed limit on County Road 4226? Seeing that we have no one wishing to speak, if we can, please have a motion to close public hearing.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing to set a speed limit 35 miles an hour on County Road 4226, located in Precinct 4.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner McCam, to close public hearing. All those in favor? Item passes. And it is actually at 9:20. Fair margin. Item seven is consider and take action to set a public hearing on posting and regulating...
Forgot to do six.
I did miss six, excuse me. Item six, consider and take action to set a speed limit of 35 miles an hour on County Road 4226, located in Precinct 4. Commissioner Richardson.
Yes, this speed limit, County Road 4226, we did have a petition signed by numerous property owners on this road. First, they wanted to set it at 30 miles an hour, and several of them come back and said, no, they wanted it at 35. So I'd like to make a motion, if there's no questions, on setting this speed limit at 35 miles per hour on County Road 4226, located in Precinct 4.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner McCam, to set a speed limit of 35 miles an hour on County Road 4226, located in Precinct 4. All those in favor? Item passes. Now, item seven, consider and take action to set a public hearing on posting and regulating no-through trucks on County Road 4614, and no-through trucks on segments of County Road 4613. And this is to set a truck route on a segment also of County Road 4613 and 4615, and this is all located in Precinct 4. Commissioner Richardson.
Yes, Judge, this truck route that we need to set, set a public hearing for, we're having problems with trucks using multiple roads to gain access to the farm markets and state highways, and there's a route that's only about three quarters long that gets them out to the public highway, but they're continuing to use the roads that are not really built for heavy truck hauling and stuff. So we're wanting to set a public hearing to regulate these no-through trucks and no-trucks on certain sections of these roadways.
Okay. Questions for the commissioner? See, if we set one, that'd be, we can do it as early as November the 3rd.
We was talking about, let's see, going three weeks, I mean.
Going three weeks? Okay. Being November 10th? Say 9:15?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Thomas, any questions, sir?
Hey, no questions, Judge.
All right. Entertain a motion.
Judge, no. I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing on November the 10th, 2020, for no-through trucks, County Road 4614, no trucks on segments of County Road 4613, and set a truck route on segments of County Road 4613 and County Road 4615, located in Precinct 4 at 9:15 a.m.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner McCam, to set a public hearing for the posting and regulating of no-through trucks on 4614, no trucks on segment of 4613, and setting a truck route on segments of 4613 and 4615, located in Precinct 4, for 9:15 on November the 10th, 9:15 a.m. All those in favor? Item passes. Item eight, receive financial reports. We have none today. Item nine is consider and take action on payroll dispersments and accounts cash sheets. And we have Ms. Harris with us.
Can someone buy weekly income with the right account?
Gentlemen, questions?
I move to approve payroll disbursement total for biweekly 21.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the payroll dispersments total for biweekly 21. All those in favor? Item passes. Next one.
Now, also have the account cash sheets for September.
Questions for Ms. Harris on the accounts cash sheets? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
So move. I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tule, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the accounts cash sheet for the period ending September 2020, as presented. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Thank you.
Item 11. Item 10, consider and take action on submitted contracts. We have none of those today. Item 11, consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits. Start off with Precinct 2.
Yes, Judge, the Pain Springs Water Supply District is asking to bore underneath County Road 2531, also known as Clear Creek Road. They'll be boring and casing a one and a quarter inch PVC pipe under the road for new service.
Questions for the commissioner? Entertain a motion.
Judge, I move we accept the proposed utility line activity for Pain Springs Water Supply Corporation to bore underneath County Road 2531.
I'll second.
Motion made...
With the commissioner's authorization to sign.
Motion made by Commissioner Tule, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the right-of-way agreement with Pain Springs Water Supply Corporation for boring under County Road 2531, with the commissioner's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Item passes. And Commissioner McCam?
Yes, I have one from Encore Electric Service Delivery for overhead utility work. They're going to replace existing fuses with tip savers along County Road 3922 for reliability. So it'll be overhead work.
It's maintenance work?
Yeah, maintenance work.
Okay. Questions for the commissioner? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the right-of-way permit for Encore Electric Service Delivery for overhead work on County Road 3922.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the right-of-way agreement with Encore Electric Service, excuse me, Encore Electric, for work to be done on County Road 3922, with commissioner's authorization to sign.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Item passes. Item 12, consider and take, consider and take action, where am I at? Consider and take action on...
Budget amendments.
On submitted budget amendments. Ms. Lee?
Yes, I can have budget amendments for the course of approval tonight.
Gentlemen, questions? Looks like we're doing the final cleanup on our transition on the animal shelter.
Right, I should have one more budget amendment at the end of the year.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Entertain a motion.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tule, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the budget amendments as presented. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 13, consider and take action on payment of bills. And we have bills today of fiscal year 2020 and September sales tax. Ms. Maples, are you with us?
Okay, yes, sir. You want them in that order?
Ladies' choice.
Okay. The 2020 bills for this week is 304,472 dollars and 44 cents.
Commissioner Thomas, questions?
No, I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tule?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
All right. Entertain a motion.
So move.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tule, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the 2020 bills in the amount of 304,472 dollars and 44 cents. to approve the 2020 bills in the amount of $304,472.24. All those in favor? Item passes. Ms. Maples?
Uh, yes, sir, this, um, September sales tax, I get approval today is $793.24.
Gentlemen, questions? Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the September sales tax in the amount of $793.95. All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 14, consider and take action on submitted plats. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner?
Uh, yes, Judge, this is, uh, this plat is located in the Pinnacle Club, and it's kind of what they've, uh, continued to do is combine two lots into one. It's Lot 227 and 228, making Lot 227-R on Hilton Head Island Drive.
Questions for the Commissioner? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Judge, I move that we accept the Pinnacle Club replat of lots 227 and 228, Phase 2, Section B, creating Lot 227-R in Phase 2, Section B, for filing purposes only.
I'll second the motion, Judge.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, second by Commissioner Thomas, to accept the replat of lots 227 and 228 in the Pinnacle Club, creating Lot 227-R for filing purposes only. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 15 is open and consider bids, of which we have none at this time. And item 16 is consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, second by Commissioner Richardson, to adjourn. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you very much for being here with us today.